Call our work session to order, first thing we have on the agenda is action on a personnel matter. Is there a motion for us to approve the personnel docket?
Personnel agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
All right, moved by Dr. Robson, seconded by Mrs. Doyle. Mr. Banks, if you would read the motion. It's old habits. Mr. Butts, if you would.
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. So originally on the agenda, we had a music moment that we were gonna follow through on what we learned last week in terms of trauma-informed care. Reverend Haywood was going to perform our music moment, but he's unable to be with us today. So we will save that for our next meeting. And we will proceed on with our special education annual plan review. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. I'll stop it. James Mitchell to come forward. As you know, annually, the district has an opportunity to submit an annual plan to the CAC, to the school board and to the state for consideration. It also includes this application for the Title VI and preschool early intervention federal dollars. The, this is this year's presentation to the board. And I think as Mr. Jordan indicated to the board, that we will receive the information tonight. And there will also be time for additional conversation and discussion of this at the May 2 work session also. So I just wanted to remind the group. So this afternoon, Dr. James Mitchell is prepared to walk us through an overview of the plan. And to proceed from there, Mr. Jordan. So, Dr. James Mitchell?
Good afternoon, Chairman Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, and school board members. Today I'm before you to present the 2018-2019 Special Education Annual Plan. As you know, we do it annually, and it is a required document that we must complete in order to receive funding from the federal government VDOE. It's a formal agreement between the school division and the Virginia Department of Education. And the funding is contingent upon full approval of the plan. The plan was reviewed with CAC on March 28. And as Dr. Boone did state, there will be follow-up comments and conversation in reference to the plan. And there's a letter that's forthcoming from CAC.
Yeah, I just forwarded to them.
Perfect.
Yes.
So, as always, the plan is really, is really just looks at the the employment of paraprofessionals, teachers, admin assistants. So it's personnel-heavy. But this year, there's something new, and it's CEES. We kinda talked about it last year, but we were not mandated to do it. This year, we are mandated. And CEES is the Coordinated Early Intervening Services. The school division was identified as having a disproportionate amount. Thank you, I'm just talking. The school division was identified as having a disproportionate amount of students who are black, who were suspended for more than, for 10 days or more during the school year. Because we were designated as a CEES school division, we were required to set aside 15% of the flow-through grant, which is a million and some change in the grant. In order to do that, to get to that one million that we need to set aside, that 15%, we had to decrease positions on the grant. The plan, and again, it is a proposed plan, is to remove 37 paraprofessionals from the grant to make up the $1 million that we have to set aside.
Let me, if I can, interject a point for context on this. While the impact is on special education because of the number of students with disabilities who have been suspended out of school for greater than 10 days, that's why the corrective action, if you will, falls within special education. Special education itself does not directly suspend or discipline students. And therefore, as Dr. James Mitchell begins to discuss what the full plan looks like, we saw this also as an opportunity to bring it under the umbrella of what we're doing both within the proposals and the budget to the school board and the follow-up from our alternative ed study about how do we begin to address appropriate behaviors such that we begin to reduce the number of suspensions. Last week's presentation on trauma-informed care was also another piece of this. So when notified about the CEES requirement, we then saw this, again, as a place to bring on our umbrella because this really becomes a whole district response, a general ed-type response, and not just special ed. But the goal is to reduce the number of students across the district that experience out-of-school suspension and therefore to come from under this particular sanction, if you will.
Thank you. So, the grant or the CEES portion will only address students who are not disabled. And during this time, well, probably next year, they're in talks now at the state to determine when and if we can use money for students with disabilities. So you may see a change next year, but for right now, it is only for students who are non-disabled. When we looked at the data to support or to look at how we would develop our plan, we looked at the suspension data. We found that the highest, the grades had the highest suspension rate was grade six, seventh, ninth, and then eighth. But that's middle school and your first year of high school, ninth grade. The most frequent types of infractions, from greatest to least, was disruption, harassment, insubordination, fighting, and disrespect. So after reviewing the data, we wanted to propose a plan that would support the schools with positive behavior supports, having staff to work within grades six through nine. And we chose grades six, not six through nine, but grades six and nine. Those are the transition years. And as we know, when you look at data, you look at the ninth grade, that's a higher dropout rate. Or that's the time when students have more difficulty when they are entering into high school. So to support the proposed plan, we wanted to hire, with the 15% that's set aside, we wanted to hire a CEES support specialist and 24 paraprofessionals to assist with the implementation of research-based behavioral interventions and strategies. And in keeping with the school division's research-based strategies and supports to assist the schools, we felt like this would be a good plan. And even though it's grade six, it's still, that person is still in the middle school. And as you see, the data supports grade six, seven, and eight when it comes to suspensions as well as grade nine. I do have an update. So when I sent this, when I was going to present April 11, the first bullet talks about how the 24 paraprofessionals will be interviewed. Because of policy that we have in place, those 24 paraprofessionals will, since there is no, it's a lateral move. So they will be moving into the 24 paraprofessional positions.
The 37?
Well.
So when we get to the financial piece, we'll talk more about how that begins to play out. But the idea is understanding, while we had to figure out how we all set 15% set aside, that's required. And again, unlike some of our others where they are true set-asides and we may have to use it, this is a set-aside with a plan of action required with it. And so that's what we're moving toward. And we're gonna talk about how we address the requirement. I mean, we didn't have any option unless we rejected all of the federal funds for this to not, you know, deal with the 15%.
As a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? So is the next slide related to the proposal? Or should we pause here and ask questions about the million set aside, the 37 paras, and the 24? What's the order that we should be asking questions?
Well, I think if we can do the next slide that looks at the, well, yeah. If we can pause here, I think this is a good place to pause to kinda talk about what's there. And then the other two grant opportunities are around, one is preschool and the other. So this is a good time.
So tell me again, what are we doing with the million set aside?
The million set aside is this, what's here? The idea is to bring staffing on board that can support students without disabilities in an early intervention model to prevent suspensions. If you will think about what we shared in the budget proposal around adding, I think, four or five school-based behavioral specialists. And part of that was about how do we begin to intervene and front-load, looking at what are the issues and behaviors that are there? How do we begin to support such that we aren't using suspension as our only intervention? So when this requirement came about, it gave us a chance to draw, pull that into that umbrella. Well, let's look at the data because we only had a handful of positions that we're trying to bring on, those building-level positions. Those are teacher positions. And looking at what the total special education 6B grant supports, as Dr. James Mitchell said in the beginning, most of what it supports are staffing positions. Many of those are teaching positions. So the concept and the idea is that if we have someone to coordinate and we then transition paraprofessionals who are currently part of the grant into a role to support the behavioral needs going through very specific professional development, a lot of which we're planning for those teachers and district-wide along with the exposure around the trauma-informed care. And you all will remember those safe school specialist positions that were recently approved by the board with the Title IV grant? That we begin now to bring it all together. So this million dollars will support the support specialists, the 24 paraprofessionals that will go into the schools for, to, for grade six and nine as the data reveal where our greatest needs and the professional development associated with that.
What happens to the remaining 13?
That's when we, Dr. James Mitchell?
I have been working with human resources. And we have paraprofessionals who resign, who retire, who are on FMLA, and they, you know, they don't intend to come back. So we always have vacant positions available. So, and looking at the 13, they can roll into a, continue to keep a special education paraprofessional position. Or if there's vacant positions in preschool or a kindergarten classroom, they can then be offered that position.
We're hoping to be able to handle those through attrition, as Dr. James Mitchell described. But we won't know until we get closer to the end of the school year.
Will they have to cease their contract and then start anew? And will there be a gap in between?
No, no, there's no gap.
And then how long is this requirement on us? You said this is the first year of the CEES, so how long?
Or the school division?
Right.
It will, we will be notified every year until we make improvement. And then they will let us know when we will no longer have to have this requirement.
So what is the guideline and how far are we from it? That we need to reach that in order for us not to be under this requirement?
Well, there's a formula that the federal government and what, which VDOE uses. I'm not that mathematician or statistician who can really be able to tell you exactly how they came about. But I can provide you with documentation.
And that may be helpful. Let me share with what we know about how they deal with disproportionality. You'll recall in the performance standards for special education, you remember when we look at, that's part of the state's report card around special education. They look at the representation of various groups in the disability categories. Discipline becomes one of those areas. So this is based on where the state has gleaned our data from our suspension data that we're required to submit for the district annually. And so once they look at that, they begin to, the general formula that they use is what's the percent or number of students who are disabled and meeting the various criteria? And then if we have a number that they deem to be disproportionate, again, I will have to go back and look at the specific language on that. But when we exceed that number, then that's where we have to go into an action plan. And so it's based on the district's suspension data. That's where it's originally drawn from. And you also recall in our accountability, in the board's accountability plan, that's one of those data points that we continue to monitor.
So I think it would be helpful for the board to know what the data point is now and what the state requires and how far apart we are in a predictive model of how quickly we will get to the state.
Yeah, actually, just so you know, we probably all, I made a note too that we imported a lot with the indicators that we have in the accountability plan.
Yeah, I really wanna know what the delta is and how far apart we are and how long is it gonna take us to bridge that gap?
So let me say the how-long. Because they are looking at this, it's interesting that the requirement is to address students without disabilities. And, but yet we're sanctioned because of the number of students with disabilities who have been suspended. So that's, that's an interesting nuance. But for us, the way we see it, and I think it'll be at least a couple of years because we're trying to turn the corner on our overall suspension rates in general. I'm sorry and hate that we have this sanction, but it's a perfect time for us to have this sanction given the district-wide efforts around trauma-informed care, what we're doing with the safe schools work in transition, what we're doing with the program specialists, the program teachers to support behavioral concerns. So it's the right time for us, again, not to have a piecemeal approach to this, but really to have a comprehensive umbrella around this.
So I'm a little bit confused because the state performance report indicated disproportionality among students with disabilities. So can you, can you clarify again? Because if I heard correctly, that we are being asked to address disproportionality among students without, who are non-disabled?
No, we were sanctioned because students with disabilities were suspended at a disproportionate amount. And they were suspended for 10 days or more. So what we need to do as a school division is to come up with a plan to intervene on how we can look at addressing the disproportionality there. Part of that is, okay, let's just say, some kids get, when they, when they're suspended, there may be, they may suspect them of having a disability. But if we intervene with research-based strategies, then they may not be identified. And so that will decrease the number of students who will be found disabled.
So through referrals?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that's the part I was, wanted clarification on. Okay. All right. I just wanted to be clear, I understood that correctly.
Dr. Gabriel?
The, the students that we are identifying with disabilities, those are all the disabilities, physical disabilities and, you know, any composite of intellectual, correct? For the 24 paraprofessionals, are they going to be going from the different middle schools and adding assistance to the teachers that have special, well, I guess adding assistance to the teachers in the building or through? How are they gonna function in the building?
Okay. So, the proposed plan is just a general idea of what we would like to do. If you look in the workbook, the Excel workbook, it had it on page 10. It talked about, again, what we proposed to do. Under it, in red, it had that we would, once this was approved, then they would send us an application. The application would include very specific things and very specific details that we would have to complete.
Including what people are doing in the classrooms?
Yes. Yes. And we do know already that we will have to change the job description to really not to, not to address them not being a paraprofessional, but to be very specific in they are a CEES, you know, they are a CEES paraprofessional. Because when we go to pull data, we wanna be able to know, okay, budget-wise, this is how much we've spent. These are all our CEES paraprofessionals. If we need to hire more, or just, just a gamut of, you know, what this may encompass. But again, this is a proposed plan, and we will get very specific when we get the documentation that we need to complete. We don't know what that is yet because we don't even know if this is going to be something that they will approve.
And it seems counterintuitive that essentially through an annual plan, we're providing, we're submitting a conceptual model for the state to approve and to accept, and then for us to fully develop. And that's why it hasn't been done in isolation with special education. But really, when we've talked about the whole discipline piece that we're addressing across the district, we put that into that, into this. We think that that should enhance the acceptance of this model because, again, we were already looking at discipline issues as a district and behavioral concerns. And so hopefully, they'll see this as being connected to a, to a full set of strategies and therefore will approve this for us. But the specific, think about it similar to what we said as a mixed-income pre-K classroom, that until we know we can fund it, we don't have all of the details around it.
Okay.
Because if they reject this and tell us we have to do something, then we have to come back to the table. And we will have to come back to the board with a specific proposal in line with what they are having. And that's why we felt it was important to show the entire district perspective on this and that we weren't just responding to this piece. That, one, we recognize that we had disproportionate suspension across the district. Two, what we were already doing to deal with it. And three, how does this become part of that big picture?
The 37 paraprofessionals, they're coming out of the regular special ed?
The special educator, yes.
Okay. So, how do we justify removing 37 paraprofessionals and staying compliant? Are we losing that many special ed kids? Because?
No, that's, the issue is, they've told us we have to set aside 15% funding. Now, we have a number of options of what we do. The district then could backfill that one plus $1 million, build it, add it to the operating budget, and those teacher assistants continue doing what they've been doing. Or we go within the budget itself for the special ed funding and make adjustments to support the needs. It gave us a chance to look at how we've been using teacher assistance within the grant and to support students with disabilities across the district. And so this is the recommendation as a result of reviewing what we have in terms of positions and what they are currently doing and where we see an opportunity with this to restructure that role. And that's why we brought this particular proposal to you rather than the district adding or having to take away another million dollars in efforts in this operating budget in order to accomplish this.
I guess I'm still just a little shaky on removing 37 paraprofessionals and staying in compliance in terms of the numbers that are needed within the classroom?
Well, there's no requirement to have teacher assistance in classrooms, first of all.
With special ed kids?
In collaborative classrooms.
In collaborative classrooms.
So you're moving them from collab?
They will come from the collaborative classrooms.
Okay, first. So that kinda presents another issue because those students in collab actually need the support. And then, of course, if we move them out, then we're looking at another problem because how are they gonna be able to maintain the academic standard without having the support that they need within those classrooms?
Well, again, it gets to how we look at the role of the teachers in supporting this work too. And, you know, any student that has an associated requirement for a teacher assistant in their IUP, they are not touched in this. But this, this is what we've put in place. And many school districts don't have any teacher assistance in collaborative classrooms. It's purely the teacher who goes in because it's not a single individual that's there to support the student. It's the idea that the special education teacher works in conjunction with the general ed teacher to be able to make the associated accommodations, modifications, and put in a system of supports for success. And so that does not shift. But again, I don't present this to the board as an optimal option. But the other option in terms of a million dollars that we would have to back out of our operating budget that has already been submitted to council with the goal of keeping status quo what we have, I didn't see that as a viable option. But again, we propose and the board disposes, so.
So you're also saying that the model is really not put in place, we're just, has not really been developed? Did I hear you say that?
The proposal of what we want to do in order to address the requirement to have some early intervention as it relates to identification and suspension is what this plan requires us to do. Dr. James Mitchell referenced page 10 in the actual workbook of template. And so that's the description of what we're proposing to do. It seems, like I said, counterintuitive. It looked like we should be able to get the approval for the model, then submit it as part of the final plan. But they have us submitting the proposed model. We have to get feedback from that, get that approved, and then we can go into the deeper development. And based, because everybody's disproportionality is different, then they will tell us what are the requirements, what are the metrics, and other things we have to meet regarding this.
And I know we haven't gone into the total budget of this, but I looked at the indirect costs. What do we do? Okay.
I was gonna say, before you get there, I just wanna make sure we get questions and then we're gonna go into the budget piece.
Oh, okay, because I was just wondering, how could that go towards?
I wanna make sure anybody has any additional questions on this part of it, and then we can go into the budget.
So, Dr. Boone, when this is submitted, what is the turnaround time for us to know if this plan is approved and then follow through on developing it for implementation?
It's due May 11. So the turnaround time, we usually get it back in June or sooner. But it's usually June because they don't, we usually don't get the money until after July 1, sometimes later. It really depends.
We're hoping that they'll lift this piece out to give us feedback on as part of the total review package so that then we can begin that plan.
And I just had a question on that regard. So just to make sure I understand, so we're having the discussion, you submitted on May 11. It goes to the state, it goes to whatever machinations. At some point, there's some approval.
Yes.
And it takes effect when? I mean, when we're talking about these?
July 1.
Right. So when we say that the 37, the 24, the million dollars, that then impacts our July 1 fiscal year going forward, is that correct?
So as a follow-up on that, does that mean these 24 and 37 are in limbo until then?
No, not really, because if they reject, we have some options. So, and like I said, I, Janice and I have talked, Kip and I, we've talked about this. And it's just a convoluted process that the state has us going through. Because they should've been able to, for us to submit the proposal as it relates to the early intervening piece in advance of this so that when it went to this, we were ready to go. At this point, no, the 24 are still under Title VI. The 36, 37. What we will do in terms of the HR function, anyone who's declared retirement or leaving the district, whatever else, we will not move to fill any of that, any of those positions until we have the certainty around what's happening here. So these folks are still continued under the grant until we have approval to continue them. So these folks are still continued under the grant until we have approval to continue them under the grant, but in a different role. But anyone who retires, resigns, whatever else of that, we won't fill those positions so that we aren't saddled with too many people for the grant, and we have to figure out how we backfill.
So when the approval comes back in June, does that also come with the plan implementation? So you know what the role of these parents need to be, starting in September?
We will have to submit that as a result, as a part of what goes forward. Generally, we have to come back to the board with the special ed annual plan, because we build it based on, I think this year, level funding?
Right.
We build it on level funding. If any of the dollars change, the board has to come back and approve the revised budget for that. So we will be coming back to the board regardless of, uh, a need for an amendment or revised budget. But we will come back to the board to show what they've accepted in this proposal, what our requirements are, and how we've responded to that. So we will be bringing that back to the board.
I'm just asking about the timeline so that we know that in September, we're starting strong and prepared and that we're not?
Absolutely, because see, our success in this, in the first year, is predicated upon some summer professional development.
Okay, alright.
So I, one more before we go to the budget piece. In the, uh, CAC letter, where they reference the board certified behavior analysts, can you just explain, um,
Yeah.
what they're referencing as it relates to what we're, what we're doing?
If we can go back to, I think it was the conversation at, uh, Southside STEM at Campus Stella, when we had the budget work session, and that question came up. The applied behavior analysts, ABAs, are the individuals who really support our students with disabilities in, um, the behavioral supports that are needed for, for those students with autism to be successful. So that's primarily a support system for students with autism. Because this particular inter, early intervention requirement is targeted to our non-disabled students, and yet being able to put a system of supports in place for them, such that as Dr. James Mitchell said, they then don't end up identified as having a disability, perhaps under serious emotional disturbance or another area, avenue, because we've helped them find the strategies for, for improved behavior. If you go back, and that's why you'll see in the presentation, when Dr. James Mitchell talks about the collaboration between departments, the trauma-informed care, what does that look like and, and what are the strategies that we link there? The, uh, safe school specialist, again, is the Title IV position. And the, the work that we're doing, again, how do we build some systems of, of success? How do we also strengthen what's going on with our PBIS? So all of that becomes part of this. As we said at the Southside STEM, uh, work session, that what we were trying to accomplish initially, um, did not need the level of an ABA specialist, but rather, we wanted to build training around those five teachers that we are hoping to be able to hire to support behaviors. Working, but it allows us also to piggyback on some of the training that's required in this special education plan, um, so that again, we don't have the special education plan having one model, the behavioral program specialist having another model, the school safety specialist having a different model. That we will focus on one model, we will blend that training and pay for it out of various pockets in order to make sure we're meeting the requirements.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, that's wrong. And on May third, um, we have a meeting scheduled, um, Dr. Birdsong, myself, um, Dr. Rogers, Dr. Herlins, different departments to come together, so we can all see what, you know, what we're responsible for, but how can we each help each other when it comes to these new positions and these supports that we are putting into place for children in division?
Trying to leverage the resources.
Well, let you get to the flow-through piece, and then we can come back to Ms. Wagner's question as she go through that.
So as I stated, we will be focusing on grades six and nine, and we will be looking at the six traditional middle schools, but we will have one K-8 school, and that will be STEM Campus Stella.
And that's because of his data.
So, we know that with a new position, um, positions rather, that we have to provide PD. So, in the special, in learning support special education services, we already have people who are certified in the MANT system. MANT is the name of the last, the last name of the person. But it's a program that looks at de-escalating behaviors. It looks at a physical piece, which is always the last piece that we don't ever want to use. It's a piece with relationship building. And so, these people will have to be trained in that. We know that if you have a relationship with children, you can pretty much get them to do, um, what you need them to do. So, in looking at that MANT piece, we will train, we will have lead trainers amongst the paraprofessionals and the C's support person, and they will train the additional paraprofessionals. In our department now, we have train the trainer. So we keep staff certified, so they can train whoever needs or wants that training. Also, we did have a elevator meeting. Dr. Birdsong and I, Dr. Birdsong, I'm gonna need that trauma-informed care to, to do some summer training. Because when they, we want them to come prepared, so they know what, you know, what to expect. You know, a lot of them may not have had child development classes or hadn't had them in a while. Also, looking at, um, Rethink. Rethink is a platform that we have within our department, and it's, it's a, uh, it really focuses on students with autism. But we now use it for our division-wide programs, meaning we can use it with teachers who are, uh, teaching students with an intellectual disability, students who are learning disabled. But it's a platform that really assists us with collecting data. And data is very important when you're working with any child. So that platform will help us, um, with collecting data, but they have modules in the data, in the Rethink platform. And one of the courses is called a Registered Behavior Technician. They work with ABA strategies, and a lot of school divisions have used it. But you can earn, uh, money with this position if you take the test and you're certified. So, we want to offer this module, um, because we do have a contract with Rethink, and we hope to be able to continue that contract with Rethink this year. So we can offer that as a professional development, learn-as-you-go, um, type thing, so they can learn additional behavior strategies, along with MANT, along with the trauma-informed care. And then, whatever comes out of the May third meeting, those additional things that will take place. So we're trying to be proactive to make sure we can start our PD in the summer, and see all the supports that we already have as a school division, and what additional supports that we can use.
I actually, yesterday, uh, as part of attending the VSBA Hot Topic, uh, conference, had a chance to have a conversation with a VDEOE representative who I had visited the White House with when we started the conversation around, um, adverse child, childhood experiences, particularly in girls. And it became part of our framework of thinking about the trauma-informed care. At, it was sharing with her what we've been doing, and we're gonna work and, and set up a meeting with Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Lands, and, and invite her down to see what our trauma-informed care work is looking like, such that perhaps if there are any funds at the state level, also to help us with that work, we'll, we'll try to leverage those, but, again, relate it, but a sidebar to this, so.
Another piece that will be, um, in the proposed plan is mentoring. The paraprofessionals will have the opportunity, uh, two days a week to, um, mentor the students that they're working with. And that's in the budget as well.
So that's in addition to their daily responsibilities. There will be funding available for them to also mentor students.
So if you, uh?
And I don't think you need to step through it, but I think we've reviewed it. So if you don't mind, if I can just see if anyone has any particular questions about what they, what they've reviewed?
If I can just point out one thing, column D, I know Dr. James Mitchell's gonna do this. Column D represents the fifteen, the, the total cost of the fifteen percent set aside. And so you see those costs associated with that.
Wagner?
Um, just a couple of questions. Other services, what do they, what do they involve?
Other services are usually our contract services. For example, the people who would come in and do the MANT training or some of the associated costs with the Rethink, or any of the other contract services throughout the, because this is a total grant, not just the C's. Those are, are usually outside contract services.
And the troubling, the, uh, trauma, uh, informed care that we talked about last week, that was, um, that was in kind. We're not paying for that service, is that correct?
We're, we have a partnership with the Up Center, and that's funded through United Way Up Center and a couple of other grants for that.
Okay, so that's coming through that?
Right, that's not with this.
Okay, and the other thing is, I read through the, of the grant, um, and I didn't see here the indirect cost. Is, um, is that gonna be included in this, and how will we use that? I'm, I'm just looking at everything that was sent, and maybe that?
You mean on the, on the plan document?
The grant, the set aside for the indirect cost? You have?
What, what page are you on?
I'm on page, ooh, it's after page ten, I think, on the?
Workbook.
The workbook, yeah. And it talks about the different things, personnel equipment, indirect cost, equipment traveling. So are we, I would, I just wonder what our percentage was for indirect cost, and what do we actually use those funds for? And could that come back to?
Ingram is gonna come back, it's gonna come and address the indirect cost piece.
Thank you, Miss Ingram.
Good afternoon. Indirect cost is a percentage
Right.
of, um, I believe it's contract services. The federal grants will allow district to recoup some of the cost to the district for, um, taking care of the grant. Things like, um, processing payroll, doing the purchasing, those type of administrative-type duties that districts incur. So the federal government and the state will allow district, there's a percentage, I believe this year is three point nine seven percent of your contract
Right.
services that are allowed. And those funds actually come to the operating budget to help offset the administrative portions for handling the grant.
I know what, I know what indirect cost is, I was just try, I'm still looking at the thirty-seven. I'm just trying to see how we can, can play with personnel and keep some of the ones that are in place. I'm just, in my head, just trying to see how we can use some, utilize something to come back?
The amount of indirect cost at three percent is?
I mean, it is of, usually it's the first twenty-five thousand dollars of a contract, I believe, um, that it charges. It used to be that you can charge that percentage on the entire grant.
Right, so you can't do the entire grant anymore?
Right, it changed. And I believe the percentage for this year is like three point nine seven or something like that. I have to go that up if you want the exact number.
Okay, so you can't do the entire grant anymore?
No.
Okay.
And, and just Ms. Wagner, to your point, you know, Dr. Boone had mentioned earlier that this is, you know, a proposal. We're looking at the work session that, um, you know, if the board would, wanted to request that they consider a, a, a different structure, then we can ask them to, to look at that and, uh, and come back and give us a report on how that would impact the rest of the budget, so. I mean, I don't want you to feel like this is something that we can't consider.
Well, I, and I don't, yeah, I, I understand it's a proposal, but I don't, I won't know what questions to ask unless I ask questions to find out what?
Oh, no, I'm encouraging you to say that if you,
Okay.
you know, want them to look at something different than just, you know?
Okay.
And I, I was gonna say to Ms. Wagner, that was a great question about the indirect cost, because I think like in your experience, there was a time when you could
Right.
the indirect cost on the total. I remember doing, um, the recession, and we had the, the federal dollars, what were they called, the, um?
ARs?
Yeah, the ARs funds, and, and you could capture a percentage of all of that and, and bring that in as, as some revenue to support. But yeah, they, they shifted away from that opportunity.
So if I look at the six nineteen preschool, there is no set aside for C's?
We were not required to.
Not required to, but was the data that the state we're looking at include all students in our school division?
Or just six, grades? Grades K through twelve.
K through twelve? But yet, in the preschool, we don't have to do a set aside in the six nineteen, only in the six eleven?
Yes.
Six eleven is the school age, K twelve, well, is, is, goes beyond that. Six nineteen is, see a few additional funds for the support of students who are pre-K.
Okay.
Bean?
Um, so, I have a couple of questions. Um, before we get too far off of the Rethink program, so, you know, I've asked about the ABA before, and, and so, the Rethink program, would that be for every school, select schools?
It's for, it's for the special education teachers
Uh huh.
who are in division-wide programs, so teachers who?
In the division-wide, okay.
And the, when you, when we receive professional development for Rethink, these are ABA-certified people.
Right. The prof, those that are giving the professional development. So, is the benefit from having that professional development or just having the strategies? Is the gold standard basically though, to have ABA-certified in-house versus just someone who's offering the strategies?
It's, it's not the, the gold certified.
It's not, okay.
Not the gold certified. We have paraprofessionals who, um, are already trained in MANT.
Mm-hmm.
And so they do implement research behavioral interventions and strategies.
Okay.
And they, they have been, they are and have been successful.
They have, okay. Okay, and I have a second question. I just moved off the page. So on page ten, um, at the tops, is your school division required to set aside funds for parental, parentally-placed students in private schools? Is that intentionally left blank?
We weren't, we weren't required to do that.
We weren't required, oh, see, alright, okay.
So that means that we, we, we don't have to participate in supporting the needs of students in private schools?
No, we were not mandated to do so.
Oh, okay.
We have a general requirement in the grant for serving students with disabilities who are in private schools, but we don't have to have, thank you, a separate set aside for parentally-placed, is, is, uh, parentally-placed in special education programs, if I'm correct, Dr. James Mitchell, right?
Anything I should like to?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, so, can you, can you just educate, or educate me? What does it take to be required on, for, for that item? Where a school division would be required to set aside funds?
Which item are you talking about?
Um, on page ten, about, uh, the school division being required to set aside funds for parentally-placed students in private schools.
Well, um, and I'm not able to answer that, because we haven't been told to do so. Just like C's, when we talk about special education and things that we learn at our Region Two meetings, I've heard C's, okay? Um, I knew a little bit about C's. But when it doesn't affect you or your school division, you hear it, but you don't research it, or you don't really look at it until it does affect you. And so, when I received the letter, that's when I started doing a lot more research, started asking questions, and just preparing for something that I had to wrap my head around, because it was for students who are non-disabled.
I think what we can do is seek a, a definition of that. What, what becomes the trigger for that as a requirement? We can certainly investigate that in time for next meeting.
Okay, that, I would like to see that.
Ingram?
I just got a note, the correct indirect cost rate currently is three point three percent, not three point?
Three point three.
And, uh, Dr. James Mitchell, and, uh, anything additional on the preschool piece of it?
It was, it's actually? It was, it's actually, I believe it's the same as it was last year. Still, excuse me, supporting two teachers, one paraprofessional. They do have a decent amount for professional development, but as you know, they can do budget transfers and move the money where they deem it necessary.
Bean?
So, you know, we, we know the impact of early intervention at that preschool and before preschool on long-term outcomes for students with disabilities, well, for all students, including students with disabilities. So, in an ideal world, if we had greater funding, would that be something that we would set aside funds for?
We could, but.
Should we proactively, uh, thinking about that as, as?
We could, but because the, the grant is such personnel-based, you know, we have to be careful and be very strategic in if that's something that we want to do. Some school divisions can do it because they have additional funding, or they have, are able to move their staff onto the local budget. So if that is something that we are to do, of course, there would have to be a conversation with Dr. Boone and along with Ms. Ingram, because it's a funding piece and it will affect staffing.
Right, so, so, there, there are two pieces for us to remember as we think about federal grants. One is, when we put things in the grant, our continuation of it deals with whether or not we're supplanting. Was it something we used to do as a district, and now we've moved into the grant, therefore we're supplanting, and using the grant to do something that we had been provided? So that's, that's one piece. The second piece in this is the maintenance of effort requirements. Because annually, we have to, as a matter, and I know this because I just signed it two weeks ago, or within the last week, our maintenance of effort, meaning that if we've had a threshold for service delivery and the funding associated with that, if we fall below that threshold, then we have to tell how we're gonna make it up, or what we're going to do to address that we have not continued the same level of effort that we've had in the past. Another context for that is when you think about, in Title One, we talk about the comparability piece, that when we attempt to do, when we do things across all schools, we then can't expect Title One to pay for the Title One schools, because we've now made it a district-wide effort. Therefore, the district has to cover those costs. One of our challenges with us having so many Title One elementary schools, it pretty much limits any flexibility that we have in terms of what goes on. And then we have to do the, the exercise in terms of comparability. Are the Title One designated schools getting the same as everybody else, in the same funding formula? And then are we able to show that the Title One funds are above that? And so with us having so many Title One schools, we, it, it pretty much limits all of our flexibility around that. And so when we think about the special education grant, again, that maintenance of effort, and that sustainability piece are, are things, it's a plant, supports, supplement versus a plant, we have to be conscious of, so.
For the CEES identification, are there, are there other items that you might wanna be proactive on as far as things that they look at that the division might have a disproportionate number of, that we can also proactively address? Because, I mean, I'm, I'm just hearing what you said, you said didn't really, you know, wasn't on your radar until it was, you know, the letter was there. But are there other things that they could have us alter our budget for, that we're gonna be proactive?
Remember my earlier comments, I addressed the performance standards requirements from the state? Most of those have a data component, that if we find, if the state finds that our actual data outside of what is expected for our number of percentage of students with disabilities, our district-wide efforts, et cetera, et cetera, then yes, we could be in that predicament. One that I know a lot of districts have dealt with, and when I was in Norfolk before, we had to deal with, and that was the over-representation of African-American male students in intellectually disabled categories. And so that was something that we had to go back and look at. What were the practices within our eligibility teams? What were the system of supports that we had prior to referral and all of that? So any of those items within the performance report could be a trigger, a number of those could be a trigger for us requiring us to do, to use funds in a different way. That's why it's, it's extremely important with the board's accountability plan and the district leadership team data reviews that we do, that we are paying attention to that. And so, you know, you'll go back to the conversations of the last couple of years, in terms of our high suspension rates, again, what have been our efforts to be able to address that? And it's not just about not suspending, it's interesting, in superintendent student advisory this week, one of the questions that came up, dealt with around student discipline, and, you know, seems that some students are sent out and then they come back to the classroom. So we had a great conversation around what's the story behind the child being sent to the office and the return to the classroom. But there's still a mindset in this district that suspension is the only option that we have available for students who aren't meeting the code of student conduct. And so that's part of that cultural shift, as we discussed last week, that we have to begin to do such that suspension is not the first and only option that we have for dealing with behaviors. Just as special education shouldn't be the first, and, uh, special education identification shouldn't be the first and only option we have for students who are not being successful behaviorally or academically. What are the interventions that we put in place? When you hear us talk about our tier one, tier two, tier three interventions, tier one is that rigorous level of instruction that we should be delivering to every student. Then who are the students that fall outside of that window and need a, need some support? Those are tier two, are the students that fall in the yellow area. Those numbers should be fewer numbers than, than the tier one. And then those students that have become in that red area are the tier three. And who are those students that need an intensive level of intervention? It doesn't necessarily mean that the students with disabilities are the ones who fall in tier three. But the, for those students who do fall in tier three, what are we doing with them such that special education identification isn't the only outcome for them?
Alright.
It all begins to, to link and make sense where you have to focus on the entire district and not just the service delivery of special education, or gifted, or, you know, whatever it is. It is all interconnected, and, uh, but building that expectation, and it's an age-old expectation that if a student is identified with a disability, referred for special education review and evaluation, that they become eligible, and it's somebody else's responsibility to address that. But when we have a strong system where we're addressing the needs of all students, and then giving the additional support to those who aren't in that place where they should be or could be, then that's where we, I, I think I shared with you all a year or so ago, the inverse pyramid model, where we should, most of our students should be in tier one, at the base, at the foundation of that. And very few kids at the pinnacle of the, the pyramid in red needing support. But what we found in some of our schools, we were using intervention as the tier one. Everything was an intervention, and we weren't delivering the core instructional program. And so we had to shift that model, and that's that whole instructional leadership piece, the work that we principally shared with you all last August, and September, about how they had gotten results, and how they look at students individually to drive results.
So, uh, so just as a recap, then, if you have additional questions prior to next week, if I can please email them in, and we can try to get those addressed. The plan would be at our next meeting, even though it would be the work session, since we did an abbreviated business meeting today, we would provide the opportunity for a public comment on this proposal prior to us voting on it. And then it's just two things I would ask the board to consider based upon what I've heard is, board consensus on having the, the, the data, or subsection of the data that identified or precipitated the CEES, if you could share that with us, so we can look at that and make sure we get that aligned. And then with the consideration of the positions. So, as, as I understand it, you are considering as part of this, providing opportunities for individuals to transition into jobs based upon retirement, or et cetera, so forth. But having us get some type of updated report, indeed, if that would be the case, that we don't find, if we find ourselves in a situation where we're predicting vacancies, but we don't have them, that we get that update sooner rather than later, and not, not find ourselves, uh.
So you were peeking, you were peeking at my notes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And I was gonna do a, a recap of what I had as data points. So, that third one is, the last one that you just mentioned, again, understanding the, the thirty-seven positions where they are currently, not necessarily in terms of individual schools, but, and what we know about any attrition.
Right.
For, so that's one. As you, the first one you indicated, the data associated with, what were the specific numbers that took us outside of, that made us disproportionate in, in the discipline? And then the third one I have is the definition of the, the understanding of the parentally placed students in private programs, and what that's, how, what's the requirement for a district to have to have set aside for that? So those are the three that I have tonight, this afternoon.
I just want to have one more thing, that, that maybe we can, to put you with that. How do we address the needs of those students that we're pulling the, the paraprofessionals from, uh, who may still need that extra piece?
What's the impact, I guess?
What is, definitely, what is the impact? And how do we resolve that?
I think one more data point was, how long will it be before you think we're gonna bridge the delta and meet the requirement that the state has asked us to meet?
I think I've already answered that, but.
A couple of years.
At least.
Yeah.
That's a, yeah.
Because as you recall, the data point that, I think it wasn't, I'm peeping over at Dr. Bailey, I think it was the fifteen, sixteen school year that we had over ten thousand out-of-school suspensions, suspension days, so. Got a lot of work to do.
Alright, so, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. James Mitchell and Dr. Boone on that. And, uh, again, we'll be prepared to see what feedback we get, and if there are any recommendations for changes that the board would like to put forward, uh, as we move towards the May second meeting. So we have fifteen minutes left, that clock just ago. And again, it's, our plan is to leave here and go to the city council public hearing. So at the last meeting, we carried over matters of the board, so I'd like to go to Ms. Bassine first, as she had asked time to share something. And then, uh, then before we close, I just wanna wrap up around the training plan for, for Friday.
Okay. Alright, thank you. So in September, we talked about later start times as a board, and had some consensus for later start times for our high school students. Um, as we are aware of the benefits, not only academically, but from a physical and mental health standpoint as well. It's also recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Centers for Disease Control, the National Sleep Foundation, and that list keeps growing, as more research, uh, the benefits of, around later start times comes out. So I know I was encouraged actually by the presentation last week, which talked about the examination of later start times through the educational planning study, and through the, oop, uh, through the transportation, the workaround transportation. So, but what I have in front of us is a resolution for the division to work on an implementation plan. Uh, that would go into effect, it is not a resolution to indicate a study be conducted, because we know what the, the benefits are, and, and it's just a movement to work on an implementation plan for the near future. I don't know if there are any questions around it?
So have we as a board officially made the recommendation that we're gonna do this? Because you have to recommend before you put a plan in place.
Well, uh, we discussed it in September, and there was agreement that this was important, and a, something that we wanted to address. So we haven't yet brought it up for a recommendation, which is why I have written this resolution to be just that, the recommendation, that a plan be put forward. So we can, my, my suggestion is that we move to adopt the resolution so that the division does work toward it. Now, if Dr. Boone has, since then, has come up with, um, if an implementation plan is already in the works, or if that's, um, I'm posing it to the full board.
Just, just for understanding, to the question. The, the resolution is to get us to act one way or the other, is my understanding, not to have it.
That is, right, to adopt the recommendation.
Either say this is something that we want the administration to go and, uh, look at, draft a framework around a potential for an implementation plan, or for us to stop leaving it hanging out there, is what I understand.
That's right, yeah.
So I think it is what you're asking.
I think the word recommendation needs to be put in here somewhere, because the superintendent needs to make a recommendation that results in an implementation framework.
Well, I think at the end, that's what it says, that the superintendent shall propose a draft framework for implementation, and, um.
What if the recommendation maybe comes back that there is no implementation plan, or that? So are you suggesting that the implementation plan is either A or B? I'm making that up, A or B, and then we decide on A or B as a board?
The recommendation put forth is that the division put forth an implementation plan, not whether it's A or B, but that a plan be developed.
And then once that plan's developed, then it comes back to the board for review and approval?
That's right, so there would be consider, you know, could be cost considerations, it could be logistics, it could be, um, a host of things that they come back with their recommendation, saying this is what it is. And the board at that time can say, we're doing this now, or we're, or we're not. But, but right now, it is a request for the division to act on our desire that we do something about it.
Other questions? Dr. Robinson?
I specifically want us to look at the cost of implementation. I want that, I'd like to specifically put in the resolution.
So in your, uh, final sentence where it references analysis, community feedback, also, it, what the cost impacts may be, which could include anything from transportation, you know, the divisions have dealt with lights, whatever it is that.
Heating and cooling, I mean, all of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I agree with that, because I think that actually will impact how it's reviewed or considered.
Dr. Boone, you have any feedback at this time?
No, none other than what Tracy and I, Tracy Richter and I shared last week.
Okay.
So, uh, what we would do then, since it's just being brought to us today, even though we've had it for a couple of weeks, uh, we can bring it back, uh, Wednesday, I mean, the second.
On the May second.
On May second. So as we also will be, uh, uh, voting on the special ed plan, we could include this. And if you could make the recommendation changes, and likewise, if there are questions that come up between now and then, then we can go through our feedback loop.
Yes, and, and if you can provide any feedback by next Wednesday, if you have additional thoughts to be included in this, if you can get it to me by next Wednesday, close the business, that'd be helpful.
Alright, uh, other thing I have, so, uh, just wanna check in again. You know, we're scheduled to go to Charlottesville Friday, uh, eight-thirty, we all still straight with that? Everybody good with that?
I shared with him I cannot go, my sister's having a procedure, so I cannot go.
Okay, well, then we probably will end up having to cancel, 'cause, uh, we had already, um, yeah. Okay, I have to, I'll let you all know tomorrow. Any, anything else then at, uh, this point matters of the board, before we, uh, so you know, we're gonna head down to, uh, the public hearing, uh, Dr. Boone has shared with you her remarks. I'll let you know what mine's, mine are, when I get there.
You're calculating them as you're directing.
Yeah, exactly. I, I made some notes and things, but, uh.
Well, I normally speak that way, I thought I'd.
Yeah, uh, but I, I, I promise you I will, I'll do my best not to embarrass us, so, uh, uh, but in, in general, I'm gonna speak in support of the, the recommendation that the, the manager has put forward. So, um, any other, any other questions, matters, uh, items that need to be considered for, uh, for the May second agenda? All right, Dr. Boone, anything? Mr. Butts, um, I'll get in contact with you this evening, uh, you know, um, 'cause I know we may have to make some adjustments as far as, um, accommodations associated with the, with the trip. So, uh, with that, uh, we will adjourn.